I pray to God we can come to you tonight and your fact that you guided us and directed us in all of what we do, that we continue to serve the people of Chicago, Illinois. And just ask that you guide and direct us in any decisions we make during the night, let it be in the best interest of everyone, each and every one of us, young and old. They may be asking your name, amen. You will thank them for their service. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a considered republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any questions to approve the agenda?
Let's go move.
Ladies and gentlemen, any objections? All in favor, ladies and gentlemen, say aye. Vote aye. I'll open the book before I'm sure if you want to hear the details of the rest of the board. See if anyone will vote that. I need to vote.
Is there someone who signed up?
I didn't hear. Or did I not know anyone? Do you know anybody that did?
No, I just saw a reaction from the audience. I may have thought somebody was expecting to be called by.
Any questions to approve the agenda?
Someone?
Ladies and gentlemen, any objections? All in favor, ladies and gentlemen, say aye. Vote aye. All right. Give them the policy committee recommendations.
Next item, there are two policy changes for the board. First is an actual policy change. It is on our social media policy. With it, there's some terminology that the policy committee thought was vague. So there were items that were brought up. This was introduced to the board last month, and this is just follow-up. So the board had time to change, had time to consider any of these policies. It does not change the intent of the policy. It's just a clarification. One of the most, the primary changes is it goes from employee to covered individuals because it covers more than just pure county employees. It would cover volunteers, agents, and anyone who is a direct representative of the county.
I'd like to say one thing. Y'all probably get well, how this committee can find you.
The other item is actually just the precursor to policy change in our personnel policy. This is basically taking our existing personnel policy and allowing for us to move, change the structure, move forward. Right now, it is an individual policy. It will allow us to break up the personnel policy into different chapters, making it easier as we need to amend items due to legislative or regulatory updates, changing language to make more targeted changes so it does not impact other policies.
Can I add to that? I think it also makes it user, more user-friendly. Hopefully, it makes it more user-friendly for employees to have access if they have a question about a policy of any kind or any nation. So therefore, it might make it easier for our department head, human resources, to manage.
I had a question originally on that first policy, and two questions, basically. The first one was amendments to policy made. Community kids answered a question about a closed session, and he said, "Would we add?" But I don't know where that was. Does that warrant something? The other is just a simple typo on page seven or nine. First sentence, it should have no exception of policy on while using the complete. So it is how we work it right here. So.
Page seven.
Page seven.
Seven, yeah.
Is that a very good top line?
Yes. Just take out the line.
Well, yeah, policy while you, I guess, all in.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the amendments to the social media policy. I'll be approved with the correction made, suggested, and striving, as well as moving the board's section of personnel policy.
And everybody heard the motion, please say aye. And second, any objections? All in favor, ladies and gentlemen, say aye. Vote aye. The board?
According to General Statute 205, 373, we are to report to you each year settlement of taxes that we collect and charge within collecting in the past year. If you look now, the total charges to collect, the total amount that we are responsible for, whether taxes are filed with your penalty centers, is twenty-two million, sixty-five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. And then you can see the credits to the tax collector are all the sums that were deposited, discounts allowed, releases, and then accounts receivable that was left at this time. It's also twenty-two million, sixty-five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. That's for 2018 taxes. Now, all prior to your taxes combined, we're responsible for collecting three million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars. And you can also see the credits to that charge at either some positive release or accounts receivable, also three million, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. And three million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. Included as well, just a little bit of additional information showing that the tax collection rate that collected for current year at the end of June 30th this year was ninety-nine point eighty percent. Now, we're tweaking up a little bit every year, but just because we, it's current year taxes, doesn't mean we stop trying to collect it. Because you can see, in the second year, it's already collected at ninety-eight percent, and that's pretty traditional, that we get to the ninety-eight percent in the second year. And then it down to the fourth year, we're at ninety-nine percent collected. So we don't stop trying to collect it. We just keep on trying to get all of our sharing taxes we can get. But if you will please approve the settlement or any other questions, I'm glad to have you.
Any other questions, the board? If not, then we will entertain a later discussion.
I'll move the approval of the tax of the next committee to have a text message ready.
Ladies and gentlemen, any objections? All in favor, ladies and gentlemen, say aye. Vote aye. All right. Support you in this part of the night. Good, well, everybody, before we got started, but we are available here. Thank you.
Good evening. We have one appointment, but before I move that, I feel like the last several months, I have a platform here to encourage people to apply for various appointments to our boards, and we're having success. And I want to thank all of you here, and I want to be able to know that I'm grateful. A lot of people have contacted our board. Appointments are being made to various boards, and I'm glad to see that our push for that is having some results. So thank you again. If you're interested in boarders still, and that's the board you want to serve on, vacancies occur, and your name will, your application will be kept on file if you have applied to be appointed to a board that already has not had a vacancy. I don't want anybody to get discouraged because they are not been able to be appointed to a board of choice. But tonight, we did have one application.
Carol, any questions to answer? There is a website. Do you know of today, sources of the website?
That is an ongoing project that Jason and I are continuing to work on. So it's best to me to call myself for Jason to be up to date, because we have over twenty-some boards that we are trying to get completely up to date with board membership, when they were appointed, and when their terms expire, so that someone going to the website can have access to that information. But I'm available, Jason's available, if you have a question about that. Our appointment tonight is for one of the few remaining vacancies on the Board of District Parties. It is Lisa Adams from Orangeburg, and that's the question, is there a point to that order? So this time, I'll give her nomination, her name nominations for appointments in this court of property.
Your first motion, and I need second. As the motion has said, if you want to add them to the district property, any objections? All in favor, ladies and gentlemen, say aye. Vote aye.
Most minor primarily updates. The Covington Street School, I'm not going to call it a renovation, but painting and bathrooms construction is still proceeding. It is as near as on schedule as construction stays. The painting has been completed for ninety-five percent. Remaining parts to be painted are areas that are currently going construction. Bathrooms, we did, we were able to find a pipe that were not on plans, which threw construction off for about four days, but we are on schedule right now. We are still looking to have construction complete by the end of September, which is the contract deadlines for those projects. And this is what was Covington Street Elementary.
Ken, are they going to move in, or are they going to wait until they put in a year?
If all the, they will have the option to move in in October. RCC has a mid, mid semester break in October, and the conversation is, assuming the school is ready and a certificate of occupancy is issued, they have the option of moving in into October. If not, they will move in for the January suspension.
I had that question posed to the day.
The next item, back during one of the budget sessions, the local council of governments approached the board. They were working on a rails-to-trails planning grant. They were awarded, and after it was awarded, just part of it, they approached the owner of the rail, and just asked if to move forward, the rail company would have to put the rail line in, or that easement in this rail bank. Basically, they would have to agree not to develop that rail again. And at this point in time, they are not interested in putting their easement in the rail bank if there is potential for development of that rail line. That rail line, if it's opened back up, it would actually connect CSX and Norfolk-Sawyer, your two primary rails. So if they can develop traffic for that line, it could be beneficial for them.
So is that line away from the rate?
Yes.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, would you please explain why? Would you be able to explain why?
Right now, if you want to compete your rail traffic, if you're upon the rail line that comes through Larkburg, you're dealing with CSX, or you're dealing with Nolan. If they can connect into Norfolk-Sawyer, at that point in time, they can get some competition between the two rail, two of the largest rail companies in the U.S., and that would be advantageous for, potentially advantageous for rail customers, as well as, of course, they would have to use that short line railroad to traverse across that, but it would be a commercial advantage for anybody who uses rail in this area. Now, with that, it is a multimillion dollar upgrade that would have to happen to upgrade that line, so this is not something that they can do without very justified reason. The question comes back from the local council of governments. This does not mean the plan, because this is a planning grant, it does not mean it doesn't, it cannot move forward. However, it means that it probably will not move forward past the planning stages. So they're coming back to the local government. There is a twenty-five-hundred dollar match which is divided out. The question is, do the local governments want to continue with that? And that question's being posed to each government along this rail line, and I think the, there's doubt that a number of the governments would want to continue funding without, without a potential completion in sight.
Our portion of the twenty-five, not twenty-five, the number?
Correct. I think our portion was under a thousand dollars, but if all the other governments pull out at that point in time, you know, the twenty-five-hundred dollar match has to be met. So if one government pulled out, their portion would be allocated.
As the man owns the railroad, I am interested in, sure, and I'm seeing where.
I think that's exactly what you said.
Right. And I think that's the expectation, but the question has to be posed to the board.
We don't have to give an answer now, of course.
They would actually look to issue contracts this month if they wanted to proceed. They're coming to each of the boards now, and I did, I went ahead and I nudged my hand, thinking that I really don't think that you're going to want to continue to match on something that is highly unlikely to ever happen.
That's the second half of the deal.
Do you have a motion, you have a lower?
No, just consensus.
The convention of the board is that it's the same procedure. I'm tired of the eight minutes.
All right. The next item, back during the budget retreat, we did go over the strategic plan, looking at it, and of course, that plan, a number of the projects have been completed, or if they've not been completed, they are in construction or just stopped. But with that, the strategic plan is five years old, but it's past its three-year, or it's at or beyond its three-year goal. So the question was to set up a time to, or have a workshop to come in and update the strategic plan, and see how we would, or how much board would like to update it. I believe the last time, we had the Association of County Commissioners, and had someone to moderate the work group. They are still doing this, and that is at no charge. They are willing and able to continue to do that, and if this is something the board is interested in, we can reach out to the association and look for some potential, start working on some potential dates in the next month or two, to have a board session.
That's not the thirteenth, you're talking about?
No.
We did it in several, I remember a month, we did it in, and it was back to a two-part exercise. You had all the candidates that actually educated the board on what the strategic plan is, what you're going to do. And the second part was about a day, which you established your goals and your timeline and had to work for that. So I think that, I don't think, if we want to do about it in a year, it's not too soon to try to determine parameters of what month we're not trying to do, seeing some of the plans from the association.
Well, it served us well in the past. Personally, I think we need to keep a plan in front of us, thirty-five years, know where we're going, and that's what we need to do, right? I for one think we need to move ahead on this.
What about January, early January, and then it really puts us as the motions for our first budget retreat that comes late February. So, I'm a position, I thought, well, we can determine, we meet again on the thirteenth, you know, firm it up for sure.
Why don't we just think about the twenty-nine, thirteen, and, you know, the firm date, or a couple of days, and pursue everybody on the thirteenth, go from there. Is that agree with everybody?
And I think the first time, the first session was an evening. We had dinner, and they came back for the second, but the planning was all done at lunch. So we do need to anticipate, beginning with, like, six or nine in the evening. Doctor, remember?
Yes. I think it would also help, maybe if you've got, as I'm sure you do, we had a list and a timeline of most of those plans, and I'd like to see which of those have been accomplished and where we are on those in the past. It would be good as we make this decision.
Do you have one, uh, for me?
Yes, I think I see you just leave, go and go.
Yes. Yes, I have, we have a color-coded, basically a project calendar with a strategic plan that I update regularly, and also, we can pull up the last actual strategic plans that were presented, bring those back in, and we can also, we will also reach out to the association and have conversations with them about moderating that.
Anyone have a question?
Well. Are we on commission? Not yet.
No. Yeah, you have to talk about this strategic plan.
Also, one thing, and this has been advertised, advertised amongst last week, we do have a change to the floodplain ordinance that needs to have a public hearing that is scheduled for the meeting of the thirteenth. There are, it is a fairly extensive document that was drafted and recommended by the federal government, and they have also sent back in through the state recommending the changes to the one paragraph that needs to be changed in our floodplain ordinance. That has been advertised, and we will have that public hearing on the thirteenth.
So that's the same, that's the same day we're having our vote?
Yes. And Thomas Milligan, our chief building inspector, will go over it fairly quickly, because honestly, I read the paragraph, and I understood some of the words, but... The other thing, I didn't put it on here, but the association annual meeting is August twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, and we do need, well, some to the board to appoint a voting officer, a voting delegate to that meeting.
I'm not planning to go this year, I just have contracts to sign. Are you going to?
I am, I've got a conference.
All right, I will, I will be there.
And the voting delegate would be, would be there for the business meeting.
So you could go, if any of the delegates want to go, you wouldn't have to go to the whole conference. You could just go up on Saturday, for business meeting. Or excuse me, around, around four.
One of the things I do then give is the director of election office.
Yes, the regional, where I'm reading five, I believe, is five county, several counties, Hogan, Robinson, Leighton, and Scotland. In two-year terms, you rotate the director of that. Hope, I believe Hope County's had it, the, going in rotation, it would be Robinson County would be the next.
That's what they, just aren't, that they haven't gotten a rotation.
And it is, I was fortunate enough to serve on as a board director for over two years, and it's an experience that you will not forget. You learn a lot, you go a lot, once a quarter, you go somewhere and make, or get in, and it is very important. If you get a chance to serve as the director, I would encourage you to do that. Like I say, it's a learning experience, you know. Just as a matter of information for you, John Galloway, he served on that board, you know, Galloway, that's the way now. Theo Breeden, or Theo, he served on that board, Carson Town, and myself is the last. We have a history of having somebody on, on the board director show. I encourage you, give a chance to do that.
And as the voting delegate to the association, there would also be a director meeting just before and just after the business meeting, and the director would be over selected at that point.
And I don't know that I can go. I know I can't go on the Thursday and Friday, and maybe a good business meeting Saturday and that, that would be quick in my calendar.
Will you, will I have to?
I'll let you know that if I can go, it's not the end of the, making a decision on the thirteenth.
I don't remember what John said last time.
I think we've gone to, yeah.
I think from him.
Yeah, I didn't remember what he said.
I hate, I think, yeah, I'm a governor here. Can't I wait till?
And that is all I have, other than we are requesting tonight that instead of adjourning, asking that the board recess tonight to the thirteenth. At the thirteenth, we'll talk about some decisions that need to be made because of our... At the 13th, we'll talk about some decisions that need to be made because we're getting close with FEMA, that we have to make some decisions. One of them is on the speed growth convenience site. We're finding getting enough clarification from them, so we can decide exactly how to proceed. We've not been able to, well, we've had to wait on making decisions on what to do with that site until FEMA got a point for their decision-making process, or we can jeopardize potential funds if we pulled the trigger on a decision before they said, yes, that is an option, or no, that's not an option. But that is one of the things, as well as some other specific items that we want to discuss on the 13th, as well as having, of course, the public hearing, which should not take long, and there are a couple of other items for, for...
Well, we may get here, or I'm going to pay this rate.
Is it here? It's in here.
Where?
Oh, it's on Pete, Pete's street.
There, off, there.
Yes.
Back.
Yes.
Anybody want?
That's all I have.
We had four young men coming in late, they weren't wearing their meeting gear, and they left at the old meeting place, so at this time, recognize all of you, wanted to address the board as you do, coming to life, following their name and where you live.
My name is Boron McFatter, I'm resident of Long Earth. He and the three gentlemen were just stopping through, just to hear what's going on.
If you will.
Okay.
You can say your name.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Like I said, it was myself and these three gentlemen were just stopping through just to hear a meeting, just to see how everything was going.
You want to introduce the three gentlemen with you?
Yes, gentleman in the white polo shirt, that's Charles McPahan, he's also a resident here along from North Carolina. Gentleman with the hat on, that's Daniel Warren Marook, he's, lives in Lawrieville. And this is Bruce MacLeod, he lives in the kind of way, the Long Earth area, who I gotta say, just stopping through just to hear a meeting.
What do you represent? Do you tell us your name? Do you represent a group?
What you do?
What's that?
I thought, you know, oh, the Home, Homeboys Organization. Homeboys.
Yes.
Ask somebody to go out.
Yes, man, we're all a part of that organization. Basically, what that is, is a group of, group of guys that's just trying to get together and get back to youth, you know, just speaking to them, just trying to get them on the right path, starting off early.
Very good.
Yes, man.
Red, thank you for your service at Minnesota.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it. We can, we can, I, you.
Oh, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank y'all all the time, appreciate it.
Actually, I believe they also supplied a significant amount of manpower after the hurricane, getting people back into their homes, getting people back into a standard living. So they, they and other young men, women and men and women, did a lot in the community.
Thank you.
Are, are all of you back, living back in Long Earth now?
No, we're not, we're not. We're still living in Charlotte, South Carolina. By the way, my name is Charles McPahan, June. Again, we represent the Homeboys Organization. Again, we wanted to come back home and kind of see what were some of the objectives and ideas that were going through the county, to kind of hear a perspective on what we wanted to do going forward, you know, bring positive things back, back into the community. That's our aim, that's our mission, so that's our, that's, that's our point.
Thank y'all for what you did, appreciate it. What you can do, David, do you have your name right there?
Well, I did, but Kevin addressed that with necessity, but the law is his way.
Okay.
That's all.
All right.
No, but the latest people have been, can't have, so he, he played ball with one of my sons, he was a real good ball player, and I'm sure that's probably true of his other children too. It's been a long time since I've seen, played ball with, I believe, Elizabeth City, and I've been coaching in Charlotte for most of the last decade, so always good to see each other.
Thank you.
Yeah, I actually do, and it's more, we don't need to do any action on it, you can just talk a little bit about this, what we're saying here. I'm not sure what you've heard going on, or saw the story on WRL about it. It came up about three weeks ago to myself, to somebody that was there actually working there, watching that building, that people showed up armed guards and running him off and said, you know, leave, and he wanted to know, he heard it was going to be all kind of things. Trying to make long story short.
I don't understand, I, if you play that, do you need a little bit of insight?
I will, I will, I will get to it. It's about this, it used to be a little place. So that, the next day, the sheriff and I were talking, and he said, let's try out here and just ask why it's going on, why do they have the guard, armed guards? We were at the door and circled by the armed guards until they found out he was the sheriff, and then they decided it was not a good idea. But at that time, we were told, we asked, what is it going to be? Because last we heard, it was a lady here who won a presentation about going to a treatment facility and all that. He said that it was going to be turned into a DSS level three facility for control of kids in custody, protected custody. So we left it at that. That was actually where I let, I let Kevin know about it, I let April know about it, also let Charles know about it. So I hadn't even heard anything about this going on out there at the time. Since then, I know they've done a lot of research on it, and I know April's done a lot of stuff on it, and it kind of coincides with that Channel 5 story about it becoming a migrant children's center for kids that are unaccompanied coming from the border. My concern with that, and I talked to her about it, is statutorily what's going to be required for us to do with those childrens if they're in the county. All right, so it's not a federal operation, it's a private contractor that got this. But that's an if, because they don't have license, the state, they don't have their license because of a previous action, and that's under appeal. So unless that appeal gets overturned by the administrative judge, it's all legal. But that's what's going on out there, and they're working out there very diligently now, just as if they think they're going to get it. But, and I know we've got some sources that will tell us if that happens, but I just wanted everybody to know, because this may come upon us, and we've got all of a sudden 140 more children under DSS's watch, and you're talking about 12 more people at least to manage that, so...
Well, they not, they hear a lot, they're not going to...
It's not, it's not a daycare, they have to have a, and you might go get, you can probably kill that.
So they would have to have a license from the Division of Social Services and the Division of Human Service Regulation to run a, somewhat like a group home facility, is what I'm thinking. But this company has run these facilities before and has their, has had their license revoked. And so my understanding is that's why the division denied their application for this license. However, they are appealing the revocation of their license for other facilities. That has to go in front of administrative law judge, and if that judge overturns their revocation of license, then the division will have to look at, can they grant them this license for this facility? So that can take a long, long time, but like Commissioner Abie said, if this came to our community, it could have significant impacts. Children that are not citizens of the United States are not eligible for Medicaid services, meaning any medical costs this county would incur if these children came into our custody. So I, I'd like Mr. Abie, we need to watch this.
Do they come into the custody of the county?
Well, that's what we, we don't know.
I don't know that either.
We don't know that.
Well, I guess it's not a, this is not going to be a federal facility. If it was a federal facility, then they would come in, do what they want, they wouldn't have a choice. But it's not, this is a contractor that's got a federal...
I don't understand how that would work. Who becomes these children guardian?
Right.
Somebody has to, somebody has to make medical decisions, well-being decisions, and who else would do that considering they don't have a parent except for the DSS director by statute?
Right.
So I, I'm not aware of any other county in North Carolina that has one of these facilities, I've never heard another director talk about it, so we just need to watch that.
Do we, do we have any control of the coming here or not?
We have no control. Of course, if, if they are granted a license, they can use that license anywhere in North Carolina. They can go anywhere as long as they have the license, but I guess they see a facility they think they could renovate pretty quickly.
They're, they're already processable.
Have they, have they purchased this?
They're releasing it recently.
And they have it, like...
My big parents have it.
I just understand that if they got resident, it's Long Earth, South Carolina, they have a, if they have resident. You know what I'm saying, the kids, by talking about the group, I don't know what they're going to do, you know, that's their business, I mean, that's not county business. Now, you know, but they, but they ain't even approached nobody in county yet.
No, and I guess that's part of the, sort of, too. Clearly, without reselling or inspections, but I don't, you know, do they have permits for this building and things like that?
They ain't required for that yet.
Well, that, that's, that's valid, and that's part of the concern, was they didn't, you know, they came in, they're full bore out there.
They only said they got their business together, they don't be doing, we just jumping in for me.
Well, they're licensed, we know what they will apply for on the license.
It's been so much care to set that nursing home, and I thought by now, I thought it was going to be some kind of nursing facility, but I'm still somebody in favor of group out, in favor of void and everything, but it's been so much attention to that place, so I'm interested to know exactly what, you know, they finally going to do with it. I didn't know, I thought, like I said, I thought it was going to be like a health facility.
Well, that's what we were told, you know, not too long.
But they didn't get it, she didn't get it off, and some other friends didn't get it.
This is a different crowd, all the others.
Different, totally different.
Nothing to say with the lady that came.
I, she didn't get it.
I guess the part is that concerns is we don't know, we're not getting involved, so...
And I think it's on pause, and it's on pause, and I think it will be on pause for a while because these hearings don't typically move fast, that they're appealing, and so, but I will keep in touch with the division, of course. The division actually pulled me aside and said, let me tell you what's going on a little bit, and given that we denied that license, so they're very aware too. If we want to go ahead and reach out to the school of government to find out, do we have to take these children in our care? We can reach out and have those conversations, see what, what could happen legally behind that. I think this company put the cart in front of the horse in that they applied, the brand got a bunch of money, that they don't have a license to do with it.
But they're spending money.
Yeah, but I have confirmed they did not get any of that money, they, our rent's still there, but they will not get that money until they actually hold the license.
They're spending some money.
They're spending a lot of money, they are doing that.
I don't understand how they can get a new license if they only lost two. They have two facilities, and both of them, their license are never loaded.
They don't have it yet.
Yeah, that's why it's under appeal to the district.
That's under review, but I didn't, if you blow that one, so why do you go with the other, it doesn't make sense, anyway.
But we will know any time.
Anything?
The answers is...
Harold, you got any?
I did not have any.
The other day, I was, it was recess, it was 9:00 AM, I was the hurricane at the , the, 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 the,